I don't know who's in charge of recording. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Um, so I am going to call to order the town of Andover Board of Selectmen regular meeting for Monday, November 10th, 2025 at 7:01 PM. And our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Um, item two on our agenda is public speak, so I'm just going to try to go around. And I'm going to start with Heidi.
Hi, I wasn't sure I was going to be doing it this way, but okay. Um, I'm here just sort of as representative of the Norton Commission to talk a little bit about a proposal that we have. So I don't know where this sits or when I'm supposed to do that. So, but I said I would join and to, I'm here for that purpose.
Okay. We'll sit there and get to that Heidi. So we'll just keep going. Diane Grunier.
Hi there. Hope you can hear me?
Yeah.
Good. I've got a new computer, so life should be good here. Um, I just, a couple of things. I just want to thank Eric Anderson for his years of service to the town of Andover. Uh, we will miss him and I send best wishes to him and his, uh, on your way to your new job. So thank you very much. Also like to extend congratulations to all the winners in the election. And um, thank you to all those that um, did step forward for the election and um, I, I hope you all continue to stay active in the town. So thank you all very much.
Okay, Kathy Plazey.
Good evening. Um, I want to, the only couple of things I have is I want to thank all the candidates that won. And I want to thank all the ones that didn't win, but they should stay, join the committee, uh, try hard because who knows, there might be something else in a couple of years. So thank you very much for that. And lastly, I want to thank, of course, Eric Anderson for all he did to help us, especially our sustainable, uh, committee and all the other committees I worked on, like the, uh, ovarian grounds, uh, whenever we had something of question, he was always ready and able to help us. And so we thank him very much. And uh, good luck with your new position and new uh, town and state. Thank you, Eric.
All right, Liz Lokech.
There we are. Um, I, I don't really have much either. Um, I would echo the thanks to Eric and wish you well on your, your new adventure going forward. Thank you for all your help and personally, all your help with me lately. I appreciate it.
All right, Ed Weingarten.
Hi, I'm here to speak out in support of Haley Proto, who's been running a program for, uh, kids after school, um, on Thursdays at the community center. Um, both of my kids have been doing this program for quite a few months now, and it's been absolutely fantastic. And this is not, um, you know, we don't need after school, care for them or anything. Usually I just sit in the parking lot and wait for them to be done. Uh, my son, who uh, has been playing chess and checkers at the Chess and Checkers Club, um, has really done a great job. This, he has a lot of trouble interacting with other kids and it's really made a huge difference to him. Uh, and my daughter, they just started uh, this past week, um, adding a D and D. Um, uh, I don't know, game, I guess. I guess it's a game Dungeons and Dragons game, which uh, she's absolutely in love with and getting to, uh, have, not having to go to other towns libraries, which is where we usually go for her to play and being able to do that in town with her friends has been really, really excellent. Uh, and so I just want to say that in note of support on towards her and how, uh, how great of a program that has been uh, for my kids. Thank you.
Jeff, you're on Zoom or on mute?
You.
Jeff? I, yeah, I'm sorry. I did. Megan Lally.
All right, can you hear me?
Good.
Okay. Um, I want to echo Ed's comments. It's my understanding that the board may be voting tonight on whether or not to expand Haley's contract and, um, advocate for, you know, doing so if at all possible. She's been, um, really expanding, uh, you know, condition covering when, uh, this was out, extending the programs for families in town. Um, my children also participate in the actual programs that Ed was talking about, but she's also working on, um, doing like the winter Polar Express parent night out with the GTA. She's clearly supported a lot of the recreation programs. And, you know, for a fact, a lot of that was volunteer hours. Um, but it would be nice if we could pay her for some of the hours that she donated. So, um, just, also, and then I'm also on, so I don't know how long I'll last because I'm usually in bed by nine, um, to answer questions about some of the ideas I had about how we could use, um, the money for, litter prevention on the education.
Okay. Thank you. Beatty Gudamski.
Good evening. Um, just wanted to congratulate everyone who ran. Thank you to everyone who put their selves out there. Um, thank you to Eric for all the service to the town. And I also just wanted to speak in support of Haley and everything that she has done, uh, to connect the community and offer more programs. Um, and I hope that we can find a way to continue to keep her here in our town. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, Claudia Mendoza.
Good evening. I am also here to support Haley Proto. Uh, my daughter Valentina has been in the program, uh, the after school program and uh, not only, uh, playing chess and, um, but interacting and developing her social emotional skills with, um, Haley and, and, and you know, all the kids that go there. So I'm here for Haley.
Okay, Marcy Minor.
Hi, no, thank you. I don't think right now.
Leanne Hutchinson. Okay, we'll come back to you. Joanne Hebert.
Um, nothing right now. Just here to listen and stay informed as always. Thank you.
Bill Penn.
Uh, good evening. I'd like to, first of all, I, I read the article with the work that Kathy Plaza has done with sustainably work in towns, sustainability work. So kudos to her for that and for going, uh, getting, trying to get us to the next level. Hope we can do that. Also like to support Haley Proto. Uh, while I don't have any kids involved with or have worked with her directly, I have heard from others and that's just those here, but others on the good work she's done. So I would support, uh, her being, her being sustained and continued. Um, Eric, thanks for all you've done for the town and specifically for the rail trail. Um, as you know, I, I use a rail trail. I live next to it, but uh, you've, you've, you've made uh, the Andover section of the rail trail part of the uh, uh, shining part of what's going on here. Uh, in, along this 20 mile segment. Um, I would close with, uh, one question. I, I've often wondered why our voting results aren't posted by the town of Andover, even if it's in just a, a draft format that we have to find it on Andover Grapevine or some other Andover page, why the town doesn't, even if they're an unofficial draft, like like the Secretary of State, uh, uh, post them, why we can't have them posted so they're more immediately, uh, accessible. And my God, I had a final question, but I talked so much, I can't remember what it is. So sorry, I'll sign off.
You're fine. Uh, Tess Graus.
I'm all set at this time. Thank you, Jeff.
No problem. Kim Pers- Kimberly Person.
I'm all set right now. Thank you.
Okay, and I have one phone number, 2345, Enzen.
That's Dennis, Jeff.
Is that Dennis? And I think Dennis was going to make it tonight. Okay. So did I miss anyone? Okay. Um, before we get started, um, Eric, I do want to thank you for all your hard work. And I, I want to introduce everybody to Jim Blano. Uh, he is taking over on a temporary basis. He's over there in the right hand corner in a nice black turtleneck. So Jim, you're looking good. You're making us all feel bad. And uh, I figure we'll get started now. So as I said before, Ann Kremay will not be joining us tonight. Um, and so we have Carol and Carol is on, um, 6988. So, um, everybody, if you could, you know, keep yourselves muted and we'll sit there and see if we can make this move along a little bit. So, uh, item three, uh, additions and, uh, changes to the agenda. Does any of the members have anything that they want to add or delete? Carol, anything?
Thanks for me.
Okay, Scott.
Nothing. Thank you.
Jeff Murray. Okay, then I'm good. We'll get started. So item four, uh, board and commission, uh, commission presentations. Eric, we don't have any.
So I, I haven't gotten any advanced notification of any.
That's fine. I'm just clarifying. It's on the agenda. Got to ask. Uh, item five appointments, um, we've had, uh, some appointments that have been made. Uh, number one, Jim Bolano has been appointed as the interim town administrator. Um, replacing Eric. Eric's last day is this coming Friday. So if you haven't gone in and talked to Eric and wished him well where he goes, take the time to do it. Um, uh, the next five B is Eric Johansson. Eric's actually on the call. Um, and Eric, you know, I apologize. I didn't give you a chance to talk, but I'm going to give you a chance to talk now about your first few days uh, at Public Works. So Eric has been, uh, appointed as the director for Public Works. So Eric, thank you. Welcome to the meeting.
It's, uh, definitely been interesting. Um, I don't know if any of you guys know my background a little bit. I got over 35 years of, uh, Public Works experience. Um, my first, my first Public Works, I was in East Hartford for 13 years. Um, I then came out to Coventry for 22. Um, I've done just about every job you can think of in Public Works. Um, that I'm looking forward to doing, doing some real good in the town of Andover.
Eric, we appreciate it. Thank you very much. Uh, good to have you here and, uh, we look forward to working with you.
Thank you. I look forward to working with you guys too.
All right. Um, five C, Jim Harlow has been appointed to O A B G C. And Eric, if you can give us what the acronym is for, that would help us.
Uh, that's the old Andover Burial Ground Committee.
Okay. All right. Um, do we need to, do we need to approve any of these? I mean, we've approved, I know we approved Jim. I know we've approved Eric, but do we need to approve Jim?
Uh, I don't think so because I think the committee, the committee has the authority to appoint them and they have. So.
Okay. All right. Um, we'll move on to the next item, Sustainable Connecticut Committee. What page was that in? I don't have who is appointed or who is being appointed. I know Kathy is involved in it and Kathy, congratulations on the bronze certification that the town received. That's, uh, that is a very nice honor. Now, we'll try to keep moving upwards if we can.
Yes. Uh, Jeff, also, may I just say that, uh, it was my era. We had a death in the family and I was not able to, uh, send to, um, Kate as I had intended because I need to have my committee, uh, reassigned. Uh, you know, that they can be on for the next year until, I guess, June of next year. And, uh, I want to make sure that they're on there. And the people I'd like you to thank is Elaine Boucard, uh, Mike Burke, um, and Michelle, uh, Loren and also Mike Palazzi and myself.
Okay, so I'm assuming those are all the new members or the existing rolled over members?
Yes, all of it. Yes.
Okay, so if you could repeat that again. So it was Elaine Boucard, Mike Burke.
And Michelle, um, King, I think it's King Loren, L O R E N T Z.
Okay. Can you actually do a favor for us? Kathy is, can you put the, the names in an email and get those to Kate? We'll get those on the next meeting and we'll have that information posted.
I did that this morning.
Okay.
And, uh, Kate was very busy.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get that information posted.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Uh, and then the other one is five E, Bill Penn, Hop River Trail Alliance. Um, I don't remember us voting on that. I know Eric had requested that someone be appointed to Hop River Trail Alliance. Um, I'll make a motion.
You have not appointed anybody to that. Uh, I suggested Bill would be a good representative, but you're certainly free to pick whoever you so decide.
I was actually going to make a motion to appoint him right now if you don't have a problem with that.
For sure.
Uh, well, let, let's actually ask this. Bill, are you okay with, with joining the Hop River Trail Alliance?
Yes, I am. I was basically the second, second person if Eric couldn't show up, I could be the representative before this, but I would be, uh, happy to take the lead now.
All right. Um, so with that being said, I'll nominate Bill Penn to serve on the Hop River Trail Alliance on behalf of the town of Andover.
Seconded.
Jeff Murray is seconded. Does anybody have any discussion related to the Hop River Trail Alliance and having Bill be seated? Okay, then I'll call for a vote. Um, Carol Lee.
Aye.
Jeff Murray.
Aye.
Scott Person. Aye. Uh, Jeff McGuire, aye. So four, nothing. Um, uh, Bill, thank you very much. I appreciate you stepping up for that. All right, we'll go through, uh, item six, resignations. We had a resignation from Tom Reason for the old Andover Burial Ground. Uh, Roberta Doherty has resigned her position as the assistant to the assessor. Megan Lally has resigned from the Economic Development Commission and the Rec Commission. And Kim Hawes has resigned from the Rec Commission. Am I missing anything, Eric?
No, you're not. Not that I'm aware of.
Didn't we get a letter from Mike Curdzo?
Say that one again, Scott.
Mike Curdzo.
Uh, he actually also did it. Oh, um, that was Tom Risma's letter to Mark, Mark, Michael Curdzo. So it is Tom Risma. Remsa. You okay, Scott?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
All right, uh, then we'll move on to item seven, the town administrators report. And, uh, for this meeting, um, Jim, we're going to have Eric give it to us for his last meeting and then you can carry on with his, with these reports moving forward. Go ahead, Eric.
Very well.
Okay, I will keep this, uh, short and sweet. Um, the Bunker Hill Bridge project, the last of the concrete pores occurred last Friday, which is excellent news. Next up for that, seven days after Friday, they can put the, uh, waterproof membrane down and travel on the bridge. So the waterproof membrane has to go on. The deck rail has to go on. It's got to be paved. That's scheduled for November 20th at this point. Um, and then some drainage needs to be installed on the sides. So the contractor is still hoping to bring this in by the official, uh, date of closure, um, which is November 29th. So the bridge should be back open by December 1st as long as the weather cooperates over the next week or two. Um, so that's Bunker Hill Bridge. Uh, so item number two, field projects, the ECQC project for the athletic field improvements. We were supposed to have a meeting this morning with DECD with the two representatives and DECD canceled that meeting on us. So that's not good, um, since it took me more than a month to get them to schedule that meeting the last time. Um, that is going to have some negative repercussions to the town because we are likely not going to, uh, be able to go to contract now without this meeting um, until after the December 5th deadline where we're going to see a price increase for the playground. So I don't know what to do about that at this point. It's certainly unfortunate news. Um, but you know, that's the problem with dealing with state agencies. Um, so you've already met Eric, so I won't discuss item number three. And the, well, I want to talk a little bit about the Long Hill Road Bridge Replacement. So that is still scheduled to begin April 1 of 2026. Um, you know, in along with that will be the temporary traffic signal at Handy Road. Um, so traffic will be able to, to move moderately well while the bridge is being replaced. Um, prior to that, we have gone out and the town has, uh, picked, or correction, the town plus DOT's committee has picked the construction inspection services team. And we use, using SLR, which is the same firm that we hired for the, uh, Bunker Hill Bridge. We've done an excellent job for the town. So they will be rolling over with the same project administration as on the current bridge. Um, and DOT has formally agreed to that selection. Um, so that's out of the town's hands. Somewhere around November 25th, we will be going out to bid for the bridge, uh, the actual company to build the bridge. Um, you know, so with a little luck, right after the first of the year, we will have the team selected, the bridge company selected for that. Um, and be on our way with that. So that's good news. In the interim, Public Works has to take down a series of trees that are located in the utility right away, right next to the, uh, the existing power lines. Uh, and that hopefully will be done in the next couple of weeks. And it will be Eric's decision whether they do that internally with Public Works or whether they farm it out to district of tree care or tenant. Um, but that needs to get done as soon as possible so we could start moving the utilities so it doesn't delay the projects. Um, town hall operations are running fairly smoothly. Um, I am transitioning right now and I have been for a little over a week to Jim Bolano as the interim town manager. Um, we've got him fully set up with the bank account as the uh, global administrator, number one, so he has ACH uh, privileges, um, full access to the bank accounts and is the signer on checks for both the AES and the town. So that's good. Um, as far as other offices, Roberta Doherty has been sworn in and is now the town clerk. And, uh, Lauren Person uh, appears to be willing to stand for a period of time as the assistant town clerk. Still working out what that arrangement will need to be. Um, we will need to go to advertisement pretty quickly for the assistant assessor position. Um, pending any decisions relative to that. And part of that question should be a discussion about who fills the role of social services, um, once Roberta is fully transitioned to the town clerk. Uh, finance office included in the packet, a proposal from Cheryl Miller. If you want to consider that until such time as the board or somebody finds a new treasurer. Um, you have the, the blank enforcement report in the packet. Um, in terms of town engineering, our engineer from Nathan Jacobson finished the easement mapping for the bridge replacement on Lake Road near Basola. I gave a copy of that to Dennis O'Brien. Um, they're going to need to also write the limits and bounds for the easements. And then the town is going to begin, need to begin approaching the homeowners, figuring out what has to happen to get an easement to the town for, uh, for the period of time when that bridge is under construction. Um, resident trooper, um, as many of you know, we got, uh, Trooper Cook back to active duty just recently. And then he tore, uh, his ACL playing football. So now he's going to be out four to six months. We do have a temporary resident trooper, Trooper Anderson is filling in for him. Um, we will need to, uh, coordinate with him, myself, Jim and I, figuring out how to, uh, do pistol permits in the absence of our regular trooper. Hopefully, uh, Trooper Anderson has the same, uh, access. Um, if he does, then it should go fairly smoothly. Um, I talked about Bunker Hill. I talked about Long Hill Bridge. Um, and da, 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 da. So capital improvement. Um, we did, they did approve at their last meeting, the building in ground, CIP. Uh, so they approved it with minor changes. I made those changes. Um, and now that is on file. So that's basically everything I have for report unless you have questions for me.
Trickle is done at the new community center right now. What are the next steps? And did you go over them with Jim?
I, can you repeat that question, please?
The electrical work just got finished at the community center. Right?
Yes.
So, and so what are, what are the next steps? And, and did you let Jim know what our next steps were going to be for the community center?
Yeah, so I did talk to Rick Wilson of My Tech today. Uh, he's supposed to come back and fully commission the dishwasher because now that is fully wired and plumbed. Um, I just want him there when we fire that up. Um, and I also asked him to come back and figure out what he had to do to insulate the, uh, the waste plumbing. Uh, one of the issues we discovered when we cut a hole in the sheet rock to do the electrical work is that the pipes were so cold because the, the dish, the, uh, dishwasher, not the dishwasher, the ice maker, the excess water in the back is flowing out of the pipes, but it's flowing right at 32. So it's condensing on the pipes. Um, and it's causing a little bit of dripping on the insulation. So the insulation and ceiling of the basement is wet. So I've asked him to address, hang on a second. Sorry, had to get my light back on. Um, I asked him to address that and insulate the pipe and then come in and do the dishwasher. So in terms of immediate projects, those are the next two steps. Um, Rick does have some work to finish off the automatic transfer switch, but that's waiting backlog parts. So that is probably another four or five weeks out. Um, after that, the next big project up would be doing the hood, but I also recommend doing the hood at the same time you do the fire alarm system for the building because there is currently no uh, fire alarm in the building. And I really don't think you, uh, should be, um, using heavy combustion appliance without an alarm system in the building, in a building designed for seniors and people with limited mobility. So that's my take on it. Um, those are it in terms of projects and next upcoming.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Jeff Murray? Uh, early.
All set. All set. Thank you.
No problem. All right. Um, we will, uh, move on to old business. And so items eight A, where we've already discussed, item eight B. Um, is there any update on the finest? Have we gotten any, uh, new applications or anybody that's put up any new individuals? Eric, has it come through?
No.
No? Okay. Uh, anybody have any discussion on Andover's finest? Okay. Uh, eight C, the status of the veteran fields improvement. I know Eric, in your report, you sat there and told us about the individuals that were, um, the bidding process and how that worked, but where are we at with the project? Just a brief, like, when are we going to get started?
Kind of at a standstill. I had asked about six weeks ago that we be allowed to combine the two funding sources into the same project. Um, and sent them a proposed finance schedule for both projects included in one and asked for decision one way or the other, whether we were going to be allowed to do it or whether we were going to have Whether we were gonna have to do it as two separate phases and just put out two contracts to the contractor. Um, you know, I've been struggling to get DECD to give me a response one way or the other. We finally got a meeting scheduled today because one of the members of D ECD was working remotely. In Colorado and didn't want to attend meetings. Um, then they blew us off today, think. For some health complaint. So we have no meeting scheduled. We have no nothing. So that unfortunately is on hold. That's dealing with state bureaucracy.
Meanwhile, Jeff, the price of the uh playground is gonna go up nine percent.
Yep, it's gonna be a hit. You're gonna have to shrink the playground.
Eric? Let's talk about that tomorrow. How about that?
Fair enough.
Okay, excellent. Um, eight D, the AES uh renovation bathroom project. Do you have any additional information, Eric?
I do not.
Okay.
Um, Jeff, Valerie reached out to me November first and said they wanted to review the drawings and I asked for copies before the meeting. And Valerie responded that she had to get approval from Caitlin, the chair, the chairwoman of the BOE. Um, we're into the tenth now. I still haven't seen any drawings, so. That's pretty much where we're at. There was supposed to be a meeting to review, but it hasn't happened yet.
Okay, there's a Board of Education meeting on Wednesday. We'll sit there and see where they're at and. Um, eight E, the NIP program request for expenditure.
Okay, so Megan Lawley is on this call. I'd like to. She was the one that approached me originally with a proposal to be labeling all the drains. As he's done with a lot of communities and I think she can speak to.
Okay, Megan?
Sure. Yeah, so I had listened to one of the meetings a while back for you guys to talk about the funding and had looked into it and what um. You know, the state has on its web page for how it can be used. And it seems like it had to be relatively tied to pollution, um, which makes sense. But uh, in my past career, I was a. A director for program and a nonprofit and that's one of the things we did to raise education and awareness of. Stormwater pollution. I think folks don't realize that storm drains actually. In communities like ours go to the nearest water body as opposed to, you know, water treatment systems. So they may even intentionally put stuff down the drain. Thinking it's the right thing to do. So it's a way to engage the community and raise awareness. Um. So I'd be happy to help implement it if it's something the town wanted to pursue and I I have touched these with cup scouts. They'd definitely be interested. Um, and I'm looking to connect with Alphala and Alma, um, but I think generally the Lake community would be supportive, especially if there's no cost that they have to incur.
Okay, so what we'll do, uh, Megan, is maybe uh sometime you and I can connect. And get some details as to what the program potentially would entail. And we can come back and present to everybody. Um. But let's uh, let's sit there and see what we can do related to that. But thank you very much for that. Uh, uh, and Eric, those dollars have been put into which fund?
Uh, I think they're right now sitting in the CART program account. But they're not being spent out of CART funds. They're just sitting there.
Yeah. Alright, um. Okay. Um. Let's sit there and revisit that at the next meeting with maybe an understanding of what the project would would. For the money that's available with the project will will get for us. So Megan, I'll get with you after this meeting and we can. Uh, exchange emails and get some things written up.
Okay.
Yeah, alright, thank you very much. Um. Eight F, the NECOG animal control cancellation. Where are we with that, Eric?
Uh, we're not anywhere. Uh, Jim and I had some discussions about that. He's got some ideas about. Some potential uh town combinations we could make. Um, it's not something we want to do on our own, certainly, and we take that on as a town. We desperately want to combine with somebody else and just pay somebody as a shared service to deal with it. Given the change in regulations.
Okay.
Did you have another town in mind?
I have a couple actually, but. Let's see how it pans out before we. See if they're even open to it.
Jim, if you could sit there and investigate that, that would be helpful. Just sit there and report back to us and let us know. If someone might be interested in assisting in that shared service. Alright, okay, um. Uh, eight G AES transportation. Is this the issue related to the school bus?
Uh, yes, primarily. Uh, so I put my correspondence with Val in there. My personal suggestion at this point is they don't seem to very be very happy with the proposal. Um, and it certainly hasn't been beneficial in town.
That's okay.
So we should simply cancel.
Let's, let's sit there and move to what the next issue is. Do you have any other issues related? I mean, I understand the school issue and and I understand we we spoke about it and I understand where we're at.
Yep.
We're, we we will sit there and deal with that issue. That's um. It's not something that should be at this meeting, to be really honest. So, but is there anything else related to AES transportation that we need to discuss?
Not that I know of.
Okay, um. And just so the other board members, I mean, I I'm assuming you all had the time to read the issue related to the the school bus and the transportation. Um, I I would rather deal with this uh directly with the school board and with the superintendent. Because it is not something that really should be brought up and. Brought up here. So, okay. Um, let's now move on to eight H, the status of the community center assistant. Um, we had a meeting, um. A previous meeting where we all attended and we had uh discussed the. The senior center and what we were going to attempt to do with the individuals that were at the. That are currently working there. So Tess Graus is uh the senior center and the community center director and Haley Proto has been serving as um. A co-assistant director. Um. And Eric, just from my standpoint, the the hours that Haley is currently. Um, working?
Haley is currently at working nineteen hours a week.
Nineteen hours a week, okay. And Eric, just from a standpoint of of understanding the line item for that. Um. Based upon us. Well, we're gonna go two different things. One is the. Stipend currently being paid related to. The municipal agent and the social services is what?
Uh, I don't know. If you give me five minutes, I can look it up though. Give me that number if you would like it.
I would love it.
Six thousand and change, I think.
Yeah. And then um, what I would ask is. Eric, if you also can, sit there and. If we kept Haley on at the nineteen hours, what is the expected? Amount that we would be in an over budgeted, under budgeted position in that line item? And or senior center, senior citizens. Okay, well, for the board members that are here, what? I need to find out and I need to get from Eric. The the thought is to take the stipend. And use the remaining balance on the stipend and roll it over to the account that we would have um. A negative position on because uh. Knowing we had not budgeted for the nineteen hours for Haley. Uh, for a long term, that money would need to come from another line item. So the hope is that we can fund those additional hours. And use the stipend to offset some of it and then also sit there and work to um. Generate some additional funding so that we can offset Haley's Haley's costs because I do think it's beneficial for us. To sit there and keep both the individuals there. Um.
Jeff, one quick question is Linda Derrick is still doing this transportation, right?
She is doing the transportation, yes.
Well, that, those numbers should probably be added to the line item.
Uh, absolutely. I mean, you have. You have Linda probably coming out of the transportation line item. And we need to ask that question, Eric. Eric, did you leave us early?
No, I'm still here, but you asked me to look up some information, so you're gonna have to be patient. Let me do it.
Okay. Um, so Jeff, so we have, we have the the stipend, we have the other line item for the assistant. And and Eric, why are on the phone? Do you know the account number so that I can look at the the treasurer's report? Community center. There we go. So. Right now in the community center information and that's on page one fifty of our two hundred and sixteen page. Report. We have um a forty seven thousand dollar line item for the wages for the director. We have ten thousand dollars for. Uh, the line item for community center assistant. And we have the stipend that is available for the senior. Money. So what we would want to do is put that stipend. Uh, put the, those two positions over into the. The community center and offset those costs. So. Uh, my, my assumption is that we're going to be somewhere in the range of twenty fifteen to twenty thousand dollars over budget on that line item. And. We have to determine if we're willing to sit there and do that for the benefit of the community center. So I am personally in favor of doing it, but.
Yeah, I know our discussion, Jeff, is we engaged the board of finance and come up with a way to pay for it. I'm fine with it.
Um, just so everyone's aware, I did reach out to Liz Lowketch and uh Bill DeRosiers before the election. Because I wanted to make sure that I reached out to both sides of the board. And I told them both what the thought was and they both understood that. We would be coming back to them looking to transfer funding from one line item to another line item at the end of the year. So. Um, you know, the worst case scenario would be to take it out of contingency. That wouldn't be my intent. My intent always is like this year we. Were uh somewhere in the range of about a hundred thousand dollars under budget on the town side. So we would have been able to move it from one line item to another. So I did reach out to Liz and I did reach out to Bill. Um. Being the two people that were on the board from. Uh, both sides of the, the board of finance aisle and uh. They were both made aware and neither one of them, and Liz is on the phone, neither. You know, Liz wanted to make sure that we didn't overspend it by too much and. Our goal would be not to, but I think it would be appropriate for us as the board of selectmen to deal with making sure that. Our seniors and that community center is 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 used and uh. Everyone gets the appropriate service that they need to from the town. So. Eric, did you have some numbers now that you popped back on for us?
Sure. Currently, the stipend. Is sixty one hundred dollars annually. Uh, the deficit, if you take the wages at the current rate for Tess Graus. Haley Proto and Linda Derrick all. Um, Linda Derrick's can be absorbed with the driver dispatch salary. Because our drivers' hours are low enough right now that we can just treat her as an additional driver. Cause her pay rate is basically the same as the drivers. Um, it leaves us. A net cost over budget of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars in.
Okay. Um. That is an amount of money that I'm willing to sit there and go figure out where we can pull it from, from other budget line items. I think it's important to the community that we. Um, we keep uh the staffing levels that are currently being dealt with at the community center there and um. Jeff, since I'm going to all the board of finance meetings from now on, I I know we'll be able to work with the board of finance on this one.
Okay, let's get it on their agenda and then um let's have them all discuss it and. Send back a favorable vote then and figure out we're gonna pay for it. And I'm fine.
So, first of all, if you just took it from the public works salary line item. Remember you went three full months without the two highest paid employees at Public Works. Uh, employed because of employee turnover. So there is well more in that budget in salary. Than that value. There's enough in the public work supervisors line alone. To pay for it if you wanted to take that out.
Well, I I understand where Jeff's coming, so.
But that's not our decision. That is the board of finance.
I understand. And 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 what I'm gonna do though is because I told the the members of the. Uh, at our last meeting that we would vote on this. So I'd like to make a motion that we uh approve the continuation of. Haley Proto's contract till the end of the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six or uh till the till June thirtieth of twenty twenty six. Um. At the current compensation levels, uh pending the approval of the board of finance uh at their next regularly scheduled meeting, which is. Um. One second. I gotta look at my calendar. Uh.
November nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
Second step, Jeff.
Can I just ask a quick question? Is there that fifteen thousand in the uh town administrator budget? Is that going to be used, the project manager? Cause I I didn't see that anything was used on that. So um, that. Could that potentially be part of the money?
Uh, absolutely. I mean, um. What would happen, Carol, is we would sit there and look at lines. That are under budget and then come April, we would sit there and send a transfer request to the board of finance. What we were trying to do and what Jeff Murray recommended was that, you know, we reach out to the board of finance. And let them know that this is coming so that we're not just surprising them at the end of the fiscal year saying, hey, we decided to do this. And I have no problem with the other members of the board of finance being made aware of this and voting on it. Um, and they're not gonna be able to vote on anything other than understand that we're gonna send them a transfer. Come April of twenty twenty six because we anticipate being over budget on that lineup. And Carol, we can use anything.
Yeah, I think they make a motion where to take the money from. That's what I'd like to see. So that money is earmarked till the end of the budget season.
The fifty thousand dollars, Jeff, is gonna be used for the uh. Veterans Improvement, the engineer for that.
Which was already. Christine Rendaz.
Yeah, yeah. She's gonna be using that. She's gonna be overseeing that.
Yeah, and so my.
And you're gonna use the full fifteen thousand for that?
Um.
It was earmarked for that.
Was earmarked for it, but it was, it was based on an hourly rate and I think. When we sat there and approved of that, the hourly rate was was from Jeff Murray's perspective, being an engineer was reasonable. Cause I believe that's.
Okay, and what was that? What was the hourly rate?
Uh, Eric, I don't have it. I mean, Eric, do you have that?
I don't have it. I don't have it off the top of my head. I would have to look that up.
Uh, never mind. I I just found it. I was looking it up. Um, it a hundred an hour was what it was figured out to be. Is what it was moved for. Scott got moved for that, for the hundred an hour.
Yeah, I mean, it it is a, you know, I'd like to sit there and see that project get underway. But Carol, if that money is there, if we don't use all fifteen thousand of it, we would use some of that money to offset. That line item for. Community center expenses. So I I'm not really, I'm not, you know, like I said, worst case scenario is we take it out of con uh contingency. We don't want to take it out of contingency. The hope is that we have other line items such as. Uh, the the public work salary line item where we can move funding from. So. You know, knowing how we have operated over the past four or five years, we always have some level of of. Resources available at the town level. They may not be excessive, but they should be significant enough to cover the fifteen thousand or sixteen. Thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars of overspend that we anticipate. So I had made the motion. Uh, that we approve this and we make sure that we get approval from the Board of Finance at their next meeting and. Scott seconded it. So Carol, do you have any other questions related to this?
So you don't think that we should wait until we do. Get approval from the Board of Finance to move forward with this? To see where the month is coming from.
This is, this is all pending the Board of Finance approval.
Yeah, this is subject to Board of Finance approval, Carol. Which I'm fine with. They control, they they control the budget and the money and I want them to make the decision. Where it comes from.
So your motion is that we're gonna extend it through the end of the fiscal year. Pending approval from the Board of Finance. Is that the motion that you made, Jeff?
That's what I made. Yeah.
Okay. All right.
And the meeting is scheduled for the nineteenth, which is ten, nine days from now and. We will sit there and I will have a discussion with the full Board of of Finance at that time.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Um, so we'll call, we'll call the vote. All those um. Carol Lee.
Aye.
And Jeff Murray.
Aye.
Scott Person. Aye for Scott. Jeff McGuire, aye. So uh four, nothing. Okay. Um, we're gonna move on to item nine, uh new business and discuss upon the following um twenty twenty five meeting dates. Uh, I am okay with the meeting dates that are scheduled there. The one date that's in question is the October meeting. For twenty twenty six. I would recommend that we schedule it for October fifth rather than October nineteenth. Anybody have a problem with that?
No.
What page is that on? There's lots of pages.
Page twenty two.
Page twenty two. Okay. So that's the schedule for the calendar year, second Monday of the month at seven P M. Uh, the only one that uh fell on a holiday was the Columbus Day of. Um, the twelfth of October twenty twenty six. So it was. I would rather it be scheduled for the first Monday of the month, which is October fifth. Anybody have a problem with that or want it to be scheduled for the nineteenth? I am flexible.
I'm good with the fifth.
Okay, Scott.
Good.
Jeff. Okay, so um. I'll make a motion that we uh approve the um. Proposed twenty twenty six regular meeting dates. As outlined as the second Monday of each month at seven P M. Uh, with the exception of uh October of twenty twenty six with the meeting being scheduled for October fifth.
Second.
Seconded by Carol Lee. Further discussion. Uh, Carol, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jeff Murray.
Aye.
Scott Person. Scott Person.
You can't hear me, Jeff?
No, for some reason, when you try to say, ah, your speaker doesn't, your microphone doesn't work. So. Jeff McGuire, aye. Is everybody else hearing him or is everybody missing him? Say aye. There you go.
Coming in late, comes in late.
There's a delay and I don't hear the aye. So, okay, we're good. Um. Uh, item nine B, the status of the treasurer proposed contract discussion uh or alternate. We all, we all received that. I'd I would personally like to, I'm I'm planning on being in the office on Wednesday. I would like to sit down with the treasurer. And talk to her about what she's proposing. I I honestly believe that we should. At a minimum, keep her engaged through the end of this fiscal year audit. Um, but I would like to discuss with her um. Personally, her recommendations and what she's looking for as far as a. Uh, an opportunity for twenty twenty six. I don't know if anybody has any, um Carol, if you have any. Caller you wanna provide to that?
You're saying to keep share uh the treasurer on?
Yeah, yeah.
With the proposal that she gave us, correct?
Correct, yes, yes.
But you're gonna talk with her, you said, on Wednesday?
No, I wanna talk to her. I wanna talk to her on Wednesday, but if somebody wants to sit there and vote or somebody wants to discuss. The proposal, I'm all, I have no problem.
I don't know how everybody else feel. I think maybe you should talk with her on Wednesday just to see.
Okay, uh, well, then then let me do that and then we'll talk about the the. Um, I mean, because. Listen, with the the election and with uh Eric's leaving, we have a lot of issues that we're gonna all have to address. And the treasurer's office is one of them that. We wanna try to minimize as much disruption as we possibly can. So I am all for um. Utilizing Cheryl's services, but I do wanna understand what that means, you know, how much time is gonna be required because. I really don't, you know, she sat there and and talked about monthly reconciling or quarterly reconciling. I definitely want it done monthly. I do not want it to go quarterly uh related to the banks, the bank accounts. Um, so. Um, you know, I need to touch, touch base with her about, you know, how she anticipates if she's, if she's out of town, how she's getting into the computer. A lot of other things that we should have a little bit better understanding of. So if you guys don't mind. I I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind talking to her and then pushing this off till next month.
I think you should talk to her too because if. Depending on what she tells you. We may wanna get an ad out there and start taking applications to get someone. In there to cover the office. That's really important position. We don't wanna go backwards in that office again.
No. Um, uh, I a hundred percent agree. So let me do that on Wednesday and then I'll report back to all the members uh by email. All right, uh, nine C. Uh, we had a request from the new town clerk. It's on page twenty four. Requesting for some I T upgrades uh within the office. I was in the office this afternoon and I asked Eric and uh Jim to reach out to South Windsor. To sit there and understand um. What we can get done. Um. And I just think we need to evaluate the I T infrastructure within the office. So. I have no problem having. Uh, Eric or Jim sit there and get an understanding of what it will take and if there's extra costs. Then we'll need to sit there and figure out how we sit there and do it out of our current capital funds or. Uh, what we do if there's a. A significant cost of improving the the equipment or the networking capacity of that office. So, anybody have any other issues related to that request? Okay. Um. The nine D, the acceptance of the section five, three, one, zero grant. Eric, do you have some update on this issue?
Sure. At some point, this is gonna have to go to a town meeting because it requires a significant town match. Um, however, uh, you have about another week to submit this form. So what I would suggest is the board authorize you to sign the form and then you schedule a town meeting to get that ratified.
Okay, just so we do it in public, how much is the anticipated grant? Or?
It depends on what exact vehicle you select.
Okay, so if we select the biggest and the best van or the van that we need. What are we looking at?
Give me a range.
Yeah.
Somewhere between seventy five and a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, and if we went to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a van, what are we looking at for a match? Twenty percent of the? The total?
Correct.
Somewhere in the range of thirty thousand dollars?
Maximum, yes. Likely less than that.
Yeah, max. And the charter requires us to go to town meeting at what threshold?
I I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, so the town meeting would be determined by the threshold required. Carol, do you have a number for us on that?
I I don't right now. I don't.
That's fine. I mean, so so depending upon the vehicle we pick. Will depend upon what we need for a town meeting requirement. Just saying, I'm I'm not asking for any, I'm just trying to give the public an understanding of what we're talking about. So if we had. A hundred and twenty thousand dollar vehicle, uh twenty percent of that cost would be twenty four thousand dollars. We could potentially have. A town meeting related to that grant. Cost. Okay. Listen, I I'm just gonna, I'm gonna say, uh, make a motion uh to authorize. The first selectman to sign the acceptance certification document for the section fifty three, ten grant. For a new senior man.
Second, that's true.
Scott Person seconded. Uh, further discussion. Although um Carol Lee.
Aye.
Jeff Murray.
Aye.
Scott Person. Jeff McGuire, aye. It was four, nothing. Uh, okay.
The signatures, they 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 made a big deal of the signatures on that. Thing and who's gonna, you're gonna be signing it, Jeff?
Yeah. Yeah.
Form.
Yeah. We'll, we'll get it, Eric. We'll get it filled out tomorrow and I'll sign it on Wednesday.
I'm not gonna be here tomorrow. It's Veterans Day.
Oh, my God.
I'm gonna be in NASS.
I'm sorry. So yes, we'll have it filled out for Wednesday and I'll sign it Wednesday afternoon.
Perfect.
Okay. Okay, um. The nine E, review of the town administrator hiring process. There is a significant amount of information in our packet as to about how we go about looking for uh. The town administrator and I know Jeff, in our last meeting, um. We had discussed putting out ads for the town administrator locally.
Yes, we had discussed that.
Okay. Um. Is that the direction that the board is looking to move in as opposed to hiring an outside search firm? Okay, does anyone want to hire an outside search firm?
I think we should try locally first and then if we're unsuccessful, consider the search firm.
Okay.
Well, at least give it a month or two, just to see what.
Okay.
Comes, what comes through.
So then.
Should we give it?
Well, we should put it on uh the state website as far as the uh. We should be putting it in LinkedIn. We should be putting it in a local information. We should. Say it again, Jeff?
Indeed.
Indeed, yeah, yeah.
LinkedIn jobs, there's a puns, there's tons of places we can put it.
Alright. Um.
The municipal web postings.
Yeah, so um. What, what is also in here is. Um, the charter. Um, so let's sit there and get to the charter documentation. So that's in the beginning of this. So on page thirty three. So if we go through this and we talk about the appointment procedures, which is seven oh one B. It talks about the committee that should be appointed to sit there and get this. So we need to advertise for this. And we should talk about what we're doing related to our membership to it. And we should also, we have to talk to the Board of Finance at their next meeting about appointing someone. So. The way that this is supposed to work. Uh, the Board of Selectmen shall appoint a town administrator, should be chief executives officers. The appointment shall be made by a majority vote of the Board of Selectmen based on the recommendations of an ad hoc search committee consisting of two members. Of the Board of Selectmen, a member of the Board of Finance and two electors for the town who do not hold any public office whatsoever. Chosen by said three public officials. So um. We need to appoint two people from our board for the search committee. Um, is there anybody interested in specifically wanting to sit there and deal with it and? My recommendation is we do one Republican and one Democrat. Anybody? Jeff Murray?
I'll leave it up to Carol. What, what, what would you like to do it, Carol? Would you like me to do it?
Go for it, Jeff.
Okay.
Scott, I'll do, I'll do the same thing. Do you wanna do it or do you want me to do it?
Jeff.
Okay.
I don't know if any Anne would be interested, but.
Um.
She's a Democrat.
She is a Democrat. I agree with you.
Maybe, maybe the three, maybe you should just ask her as courtesy to see if she'd be interested. And you guys can decide between. Do we have to know tonight?
Um, well, we pretty much got, uh, you know, and we understand where we're gonna go. So I have no problem asking Anne and sitting there seeing what she she wants to do and then. Uh, having a vote over it. So if she wanted to do it, no problem, but. Um, I will talk to her and then I will also sit there and get to the Board of Finance and get their member selected. Because then, once we get that done, we need to select, we need to advertise for the other two members. Um, we should do that tomorrow. So Eric, if if we could. Could you sit there and get with Kate or get with um? Uh, we need to advertise for um. The search committee members. And I would also ask that. The board members uh sit there and communicate to uh engaged residents within the community that. This is something we're looking for and if somebody can help us out that has. Uh, is not an elected official and can participate, that would be great.
Yeah, we could probably even send it to the town committees too, because I know Scott Sawyer had identified somebody that he thought was very qualified to serve on the committee.
Okay. Um. Have no problem. Let's get that situated as quickly as we possibly can so that we can move forward with that. And then. Once we get that up and running, the members of that committee, we will sit there and and work on getting uh. Uh, information out there to uh indeed and all the other sites and get this going as quickly as we possibly can. Okay, anybody, any other problems with that issue? Okay. Um, anybody have any questions related to all the informations in here? I know that if if it doesn't work and we go in a different direction, there are proposals. Or potential RFP proposals for different search firms. Anybody have any, any questions for Eric or they wanna discuss any of that information? Okay.
I just wanted to say I sent Anne a text and she said that she. and she said that she might be interested in serving on that panel for town administrator.
Okay. I will call and talk to Anne tomorrow when she gets home. And we'll sit there and see what what we can do, because then my question is, who votes? The three Democrats or the entire board?
Okay, well, she just sent me a text that she definitely would like to be on that panel.
Okay, so now I'm asking question, is it the three Democrats that are voting? Because if it's the three Democrats, if it's the three Democrats that are voting, Scott, how do you vote? I vote for me, how do you vote?
For you.
Okay.
But I, wouldn't it be the whole board that's gonna vote for the two that are gonna serve? Whether it's a Republican, you know, I mean, I would think it would be the whole board would still vote. Regardless, I mean, you suggested that one is a Democrat.
Can we do this next meeting? Can we do this next meeting? Because we're gonna have to still go out to the Board of Finance. We're still gonna have to advertise for two people at large, and then we can appoint everyone at the next meeting.
Right.
Put it off for thirty days.
Point of order, you guys don't get to choose at the next meeting. The three people, the two people, the board nominee, the one person, the Board of Finance, pick the other two per the chart. That's not a Board of Selectmen decision.
No, 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 we, we understand, we just need to get, I understand that part. But the issue is, are we going to wait thirty days to sit there and do this? So, I, 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 I sit there and I go, just vote.
We should pick the members of the Board of Selectmen tonight.
Vote on me first, go ahead. If one of you two doesn't vote for me and you vote for Anne, then Anne will serve. If one of you votes for me, then I would be the other member of the board, the committee. So Jeff, do you want me or Anne on that committee?
I, I would like to talk to Anne first before, I mean, she says she wants to serve kind of in the middle here. I really don't care who it is.
That's, that's, that's what politics is all about, my friend, and you know it. So do you wanna vote for Anne to be on that committee, or me to be on that committee?
Well, you didn't ask Carol how she's voting.
Okay, Carol, how would you like to vote? I'm not kidding you, this is, this is how silly this is.
No, I, I understand, okay, I just I don't know, I would like to see a woman, I don't want to be the person, I can't do anything right now, so I don't want to be that person. But I would like to see one woman from the Board of Selectmen and one man.
Do you know what? This doesn't have to be, this does not have to be a Democrat and Republican. I would almost yield my position to Anne. And it could be that we would have a woman on the board and we would have Jeff. And it's settled. Because I was already on the hiring committee for the
For two people.
Yeah, so.
You just did it.
Yeah. It would be so, it would be worth it to be somebody else, so I would actually to have Anne take my place. And that way, there'd be a, a woman on the board, on the selection committee. But that's okay. It doesn't have to be a Republican.
It's, it's okay. I mean, listen, I, it is, um,
And I was on the last time Administrator Search Committee.
We, we will need to make sure that we have a very strong, non-elected official individuals on that board. Alright, so, somebody make a motion to appoint Anne and, and myself on that committee.
I make the motion to appoint Jeff McGuire and Anne Creme to the Town Administrator Search Committee.
Second, that, Jeff.
Okay. Um, further discussion?
Just a quick question, what are you gonna do in terms of the Advisory Screening and Review Committee? Which the charter requires?
Well, isn't that what this committee is?
No.
So, so you're telling me we need
So you, you've selected your two members of the ad hoc search committee.
Yeah.
Right? But you're also supposed to have an advisory slash screening review committee.
An advise, so I have to, we have to select another committee. So what's that?
Well, you would, you would have to recruit that committee because per the charter, the selection process will include in a screening review committee made up of incumbents from other towns in similar positions to determine qualified candidates. So what this is saying is if you're not using a professional search committee, then you are supposed to be using other town managers and administrators as your advisory slash screening slash review committee.
Correct. And, and understand, I understand, I get that, that, that wasn't what I was thinking, but yes, we are definitely going to have to um, recruit, uh, as in, we did in the past, another town uh, manager or administrator to assist in the advisory standpoint, and isn't that done after we sit there and get all this organized? Because do you have candidates from, uh, local town administrators that are gonna help us?
No, I was assuming you would check that box with a professional screening committee.
Understood.
Uh, hired screening committee.
And, and, and I understand, Eric, your, your thought on that, and we're gonna sit there and have to go in a in a different direction, so we're gonna have to sit there and work as a board to find the members. Uh, we'll work with Jim to sit there and find out who we can sit there and get to assist us as we move forward in this process. So, um, that is something that we can do after we sit there and get the entire committee there, because as I'm reading this, it doesn't say how many people are going to be on that. It just says we need to hire a search, a, a committee to, uh, that committee would be, one of the, one of their processes, I would assume, would be to review any resumes received and any applications received.
And how long are we gonna do this for? Before we do the, uh, professional search people?
Well, we have to sit there and see how we get a response, and if we get a response, and if there's anybody that we believe is qualified, and if we don't get uh, a good response to what we put out there, then we go and do a professional search committee. So basically, we're gonna probably try this for ninety to ninety days, I would guess.
Indeed.
Yeah.
Three months.
Well, you're gonna have to sit there and go through this process, and then you're gonna have to sit there and give them a timeline to submit. And then you're gonna have to review, and then you're gonna have to sit there, and if we feel comfortable that they're, they're qualified candidates, we're gonna have to have an interview process.
I think you should just make it ongoing, Jeff, until somebody's found, because that interview committee is going to still interview the ones that the search committee or the search firm that we hired. If we have to go out to a search firm, we would still interview candidates.
Oh, understood, but what, what Scott was asking is how long before we decided to turn around and hire a search committee, a search firm?
I would say February, March.
So ninety days.
Yeah, cuz right, to be honest with you, November, December is gonna be tough. I mean, a lot of people are gonna be looking for jobs during the holiday season. Possibly, but
Let's, uh.
Trying to get people together during this next six weeks is gonna be sort of difficult.
Okay, so let's sit there and see if we can, you know, expedite what we're doing and do it as quickly as possible, and then you know, if we find that we're not having success moving down this path, we're gonna have to sit there and pivot. Anybody got any problems with that?
Okay, uh, just one more thing, do we, should we reach out to a couple of these search firms and just get some pricing, just so we know budgetary of what we're talking?
Uh, Eric has.
We got one.
Like to talk about it?
It was fifteen thousand dollars, I think, when I read it.
Fifteen plus.
So I reached out to two firms, your range is some, it's gonna be somewhat dependent on how much services you want. Um, but the range is gonna be somewhere between a low of around ten thousand dollars and a high of around twenty-five thousand dollars, that's your range. But you're gonna have to decide whether you want support via Zoom or support in person. Um, and you're gonna wanna, you're gonna have to decide whether you want them doing all the background checks and investigation, or you wanna handle that yourself. Um, and you're gonna wanna have to, to speak with them on where you wanna advertise. Cuz that can be, that can run in the thousands, depending on where you're advertising. So those are, that's your range.
So are we still? Are we still good with moving forward with the direction that we, we want to move in, or are we looking potentially to sit there and hire a search firm?
Search firms seem very qualified.
If we were to follow the charter though, with seven oh one B, um, with the Advisory Screening Review Committee incumbents from other towns, um, just, I would say put it out to take the applications like Jeff said, and then, um, have the advisory committee screen them, put them forward, and then the two selectmen, the one member of the Board of Finance and two members of our public then decide after interviewing those that were screened and put forward.
Who's, who's gonna do all the backgrounds?
Well, we'll figure out the background checks, it's, it's, you know, all of those things are things that we can get accomplished, um. It's more a question of what you're looking at doing, so I, I would rather, if the goal is to sit there and do this, let's do this for ninety days, see what we get for applicants, and then move on as quickly as possible. I don't wanna be wasting time. If, you know, if we have to pivot and go to a search firm, it's gonna delay us, you know, we're gonna be out another three months before, you know, because I read their, their in, you know, I was looking at their documentation, and they did have a timeline as to what it would take for them to sit there and get potential candidates for it.
It's another three months.
Yeah. So if the goal of the board is to sit there and, and, and do it, they have, you know, obviously, if we sit there and go to the search firm, we have another fifteen thousand dollars expense. If we do it this way, we probably still have another five thousand dollars expense. So what's gonna end up happening is we're gonna spend five thousand dollars to do it this way, and then we're gonna sit there and potentially pivot. Hopefully, we could find a qualified candidate that we can all agree upon and get them hired, but, um.
I mean, these search firms are no magic bullet, they're just going on the web and looking for resumes and they're advertising, that's basically all they're doing. It's, it's, it's not rocket science. We're paying a lot of money for that service.
Okay, and, and I, I have no problem supporting that, this direction, I just, we just need to do it quickly, I don't wanna waste any time. Right, because I, I'm concerned that we do pivot, and we have trouble finding candidates, that we have to now go to a search firm, and we have we've delayed our, our permanent replacement. Alright, so we have appointed the two in, two individuals from the Board of Selectmen to the committee. We need to sit there and, um, get a member from the Board of Finance, uh, appointed at their meeting. And then, uh, Jim, um, and Eric, if you can, anybody that you can um, identify as an existing town administrator or town manager that might, would be willing to assist us, uh, to evaluate um, resumes and, uh, applicants, that would be great. Okay. Where are we? Oh, uh, nine F, a review of the senior transportation garage status. Eric, where are we at with that building? I know that's in our packet.
So I gave you the revised structural plan in your packet that starts on page one fifteen. Uh, we did not make it in the packet, but he did, uh, provide a revised cost estimate, which I have not even read. So I'm not gonna comment on one way or the other, and they still have not uh, supplied us with exterior elevations. Um, Jim and I did meet with the contractor on site to answer a series of questions that he had, but I don't, we don't currently have a proposal. You know, that I think you should be voting on at this point.
Okay. Alright, um.
But if you have questions or feedback on the design itself, feel free and I'll pass them up.
Uh, it was all. I mean, there was a slab work, and a slight roof truss configuration. What's the height, what's the exterior look like? There's a lot of questions.
Yep, concur.
Okay, so we'll sit there and Jim will look at that and sit there and see if we can get with the, the contractor and get some, or the potential builder and get some better, uh, idea of what we're really looking at.
This is all because you changed the roof trust system to make more room up there, Eric. I thought that they already came back with a proposal for that.
Well, the problem is, is that we didn't have anything visual. We had kind of a vague proposal on what they wanted, and they hadn't sent it out for the engineering. So we signed a quick design contract with them uh, as part of the overall process, because I feel a lot more comfortable once I see a final design and a set of visuals on what this is we're getting. Um, so that's a stage where now, I had hoped they would have provided that to us already, but they haven't. So this is as far along as we are on that proposal.
I mean, at one point, you had, we had a, an exterior design of that building.
Right.
It might have been internally done, but so they didn't take that preliminary design and
No, so, so we had an exterior design of that building, which you and the board didn't want to build because it didn't have adequate storage space on the second floor. So then, we turned that based on the feedback from you and the board. We went back to the contractor and we said, we don't want this built essentially one story with a bonus room troughs. We want two full stories and whatever roof you put on top of that. And that's where we're at now, coming back with that revised plan.
Okay, alright, so.
So we have more space up there, Jeff?
No, 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 I, listen, I am all good with it. We, we, space is a problem with the community, the Breck Commission needs space, there's space that needs to be dealt with. I mean, you could put three garage doors up there on the second floor and have it be cold storage. Um, I'm definitely all for that, Eric, the, you know, when you were initially doing this, the roof was, was situated to face in the appropriate direction for potential solar panels, so when they get it done, if we can upstairs cold storage, roof, slanted roof with the majority of it toward the back so that we could maximize sun if at all possible. And, uh, yeah, Jim will get with this, this group and see what we can get done, so we can have something for the next meeting. Anybody have any questions related to that? Okay. A nine G Construction Inspection Services for Long Hill?
Uh, that's in your packet, starting as page one nineteen. The search or the rating committee, which was myself, uh, one of Town of Coventry's engineers, Mark Saint Germain, uh, Ed Sarisli is a PhD in construction engineering, Bill Watkins, uh, who is the Public Works Director for Coventry, and Michelle Rang, who's a DOT engineer, were on the panel. Uh, we evaluated the three firms that sent in proposals. Um, we all preferred the proposal from SLR um, over the two over WMC and Benesh. Um, I submitted all the forms and the summary of that to, uh, DOT and to VHB. And VHB has gotten concurrence, um, and, uh, DOT is now negotiating with SLR for the, uh, you know, for the compensation for that. This is This is, this was an RFQ for, so it's basically a request for Qualifications, we choose the best firm. And then DOT basically uses their standard uh cost Uh, per hour formula for each category um as part of the the thing. I also listed on there what the interview questions that we asked The panel and put all the interview rating forms on there, so you could see how each individual rated them. Uh, total for your information. So that is basically done. Um, DOT has preliminary set Said they're accept, it's the accepting SLR. So SLR, when they finish the project On Bunker Hill, we'll move directly into the Long Hill Bridge Project for Construction Inspection Services.
Okay, and so this is for inspection services. And this is all part of the Long Hill Bridge Project. Is this something that's funded by the town, or is this funded by the state?
Uh, this is funded by a combination of state and federal funds. The town is not gonna actually pay anything for this bridge when everything is said and done. Um, that presupposes that uh at the next Uh, Capitol Regional Council of Governments, they have a favorable tip amendment To cover the increase in costs for building the Long Hill Bridge. They've requested uh Um, I don't know, about an extra million for the construction of that bridge.
Okay. So When you say that, who who requested the extra million? Is it the contractor that the state, the state and the federal program has selected, or who who's Is the bid that came up for this that high?
So we haven't gotten to the bid stage for the construction. However, we've gone through, we've basically gotten through final design. And with final design, uh, the designer lists expected costs for the construction Both for materials and labor. And then kind of the next, so that is the estimate On which the tip amendment is based, is on the contractor's estimation of the cost of construction. Then somewhere around November twenty fifth, it will go out to bid. When the actual numbers come back, the lowest qualified bidder Will be selected. So basically, all the firms that supply the correct documentation And have a qualified bid, then go and get reviewed by The uh design firm, that's the bridge designer of record Who comes back and determines whether the lowest bid is a qualified bidder. And if it is, that company is selected automatically. And that then becomes the final cost basis for the bridge, plus any change orders. You know, so basically, this accounts for the fact that it's been four years Since this bridge was originally accepted in the federal local bridge program. And in that time, labor's gone up significantly, materials have gone up significantly. And the cost of construction is up. And that accounts for that.
Okay. What happens if they reject that?
I don't know, maybe we don't build a bridge.
We don't build a bridge, okay. Alright, um.
So the the reason, the region, the reason CROG has to approve it, so If it's a tip amendment, that means the Uh, Connecticut DOT has already approved the increase. But the Capital Regional Council of Governments serves at as the MPO Or Metropolitan Planning Organization. And all of DOT's cost increases have to get referred to to CROG for an up or down vote. Uh, but since it doesn't cost anything to CROG as a region And it's already funded money from the federal or state government, they're not gonna turn it down. They have no incentive to.
Okay. Well, let's get it built, so. Twenty twenty six is a big year for that one, right?
Correct.
Okay, um, nine H Sustainable Connecticut Award. So Eric, you were at the the ceremony, uh, Andover was awarded a bronze certification. The committee driven by Kathy Plazzi and Elaine Buchart did a great job um on page Uh, one thirty eight of our packet, it has a bronze certification uh Document that was put out there and uh I'd definitely like to congratulate everybody that served on that committee and worked to get it done. I think it's great for the town.
Congratulations to all of them.
Yeah, anything that you wanna sit there and add to that from Your position?
No, I think it's uh for a relatively small town with limited resources. I think we're You know, I looked at the Sustainable CT Certificate is basically What the town is doing well in terms of governance and in terms of Doing things that are good environmentally and smart economically. And it's an acknowledgement that we're one of about thirty five towns that received this award this year. So I think that's kudos to the town and the Sustainable CT Committee For really pushing and doing the documentation on this. And for a lot of the departments and organizations who do work towards it.
Okay, alright, thank you very much. Anybody have any questions related to Sustainable Connecticut Award? Okay, uh, nine I, the Percy Cook Trail Preliminary Plan.
Okay, so that is page one thirty nine of your packet. Uh, you have two maps Which show uh an overview of the proposed trail going down the town property. And then an enlargement of the area directly by the uh municipal campus. So I asked the town's engineer To get us a preliminary set of drives, cause I wanted to share with the Board of Education. Simply because I know they're going to have some significant concerns with safety For a trail that runs near the school. And if we improve it and make it better and more people on it, they're gonna have even more concerns. So I had hoped To uh have myself and the engineer discuss this with the Board of Education. But they have no interest in meeting with us this month. So that's gonna be uh a future problem to be dealt with. Um, and frankly, the engineering firm is gonna have to keep with the design. Um, and then we're gonna have to deal with their comments or concerns further on in the design process. Which is unfortunate, but that's a Board of Ed decision.
So does this proposed trail uh exit at the fire department parking lot?
Correct.
Okay.
We're doing everything we can to keep it as far away from the school as possible.
Okay, and then do they, does the engineering group have a Like, what's the distance, the the close, the closest distance to that town line that's near the soccer field?
The town line near.
Town line or the school property line you're saying?
Yeah, that's, that's a town property. So that line that goes back there that's near the soccer field, how far away is it?
I don't know.
Okay. If you, if you can get that and then, you know, If you, if they, if the engineering firm can get that, and if if it does come up at the Board of Ed meeting, I'd be happy to let them know.
Um, I mean, we're not gonna know that until after the survey.
Okay, and when's the survey?
Well, so we hoped to have dealt with the school And had a rough trail idea before we commit To surveying this, cause I don't wanna, this is a seventy acre parcel. I do not wanna topo and survey the whole process, cause that's well beyond the scope. So what I was hoping was to get this back with the school And know what area we're topoing, so they can survey what they think is the actual proposed trail. Now, this becomes a problem, cause now we either put it off a month And we don't have any progress until we talk to the school. Or we survey and hope that that's closer to the final path. And I don't, you know, I'm I don't know which way to proceed. And actually, it's not even my problem at this point, it's Jim's problem.
Well, it's this board's problem, so let's sit there and see what we can do.
I'm gonna look at the map again, Jeff, and I'll see if I can figure out how far, how far it is.
Okay, alright, um. Eric, do you have any more documentation for This? For this trail that you would have provided to the Board of Education?
No.
Okay.
I mean, look at the, looking at it, Jeff, it's a, it's quite a waste. I know that property pretty well, and it's Well, if you look at that map, and if you look at the map enlargement where it comes on the other side of the community center. It's, it's fairly, it's, it's quite a, cause it's on the other side of the power lines, the gas lines.
Gotta be, you know Three or four hundred.
There's a, there's a pine grove in there, that's where it's going through, and it's It's, that is well beyond, that's out of sight of the soccer field, actually.
Okay.
If if you look on page one forty, That shows their rough ideas of the elevations based on On the locations, and the location A and B are identified on the map, so you can kinda see Where it is they're talking about.
So it's a hundred, hundred and seventy feet from the start of the soccer field.
Correct.
Okay. And it's going downhill. Okay. Okay.
Right, so we did everything we could to make it out of sight of the school And not have any impact on the school. Now, the problem comes in during engineering, when you go out and topo that There are some wetlands they have to deal with, and that may be impractical. But that is the, that is the goal, is to put the trail there. So we minimize any impact to the school, and that's what we were attempting to discuss with the school, but, you know.
Yeah, I agree with that. That's all, that's very wet in there. It's extreme. I mean, when we used to have the bike races in there, we couldn't go through there. It was too wet.
Okay. Alright, so Um, I will sit there and um I will get this to Caitlin so that she can have it for the Board of Education.
Caitlin and the superintendent have copies of this already. They've had it for quite a while.
Oh, okay, uh, I'll send it out to the other members of the board. Okay, go ahead. What's next? Actually, I gotta go. It's my job, sorry. Um, nine J, the cannon update?
Sure, very simple. The wheels basically fell off the cannon. They got so rotted, the spokes all rotted off. Uh, we are ordering a set of replacement wheels from an Amish wheel builder. Um, and an axle. We're probably gonna have to shorten the axle. But that's a welding job and Public Works is capable of doing that. There's no way we're getting exact replacement for those wheels, cause those were made somewhere in Japan. Somewhere in the thirties. So we're gonna make something that will last, that will look fairly normal historically And replace it. It's gonna cost about a thousand bucks.
Okay. Anybody have any questions related to the cannon? I mean, I do have to tell you that that, that That monument park and Veterans Monument Park looks really nice. And Jerry Wright and the rest of the team did a great job. Every, every time I drive by it, I'm like, it's, it is very nice, the bridge and that monument park, uh, they did a nice job. Okay. Uh, nah, um, nine K authorized town administrator to sign a contract for fuel and diesel for next fiscal year. So Eric, why don't you give us some information as to the status of diesel and fuel pricing, and then we'll make the motion.
So the pricing has been fairly steady for about the last Month and a half. It's ranging somewhere from low About two fifty nine a gallon to somewhere around two sixty five a gallon for uh diesel fuel. So we lock in at the same time for both diesel fuel for town vehicles. Um, which includes the school as well as heating oil at the same time. But we use very little heating oil, so we tend to key on what the cost of diesel is. And as far as I'm concerned, if we can get it for under about two sixty A gallon, it's worth locking in sometime in the next three weeks or so. Typically, around the first week of December, tends to be the lowest Cost point for locking in for a contract that's six months out. Um, for a futures contract that's six months out, but obviously geopolitical stuff comes into play, so You know, it's always possible something happens geopolitically that drives up or down the cost of of fuel oil.
Yes. I I'll basically make a motion that we authorize the town administrator Uh, to sign a contract for fuel and diesel for the next fiscal year. At the time that they deem appropriate.
Second, that's true.
Okay, further discussion on the fuel oil contract. It's something we sign every year.
Yeah, every year.
Every year. Any further discussion? Okay, um, we'll call the, we'll call the vote. Carol Lee?
Aye.
Jeff Murray?
Aye.
Scott Person? Jeff McGuire?
Aye.
Um, so that was four nothinged, alright. Um, we're gonna move on to item ten, approval of uh minute meetings, uh minute Meetings for our ten six twenty twenty five regular meeting. The minutes start on page one forty three and go to one forty seven. I'll make a motion that we approve the minute meetings for the ten six twenty twenty five regular meeting.
Seconded.
Seconded by Jeff Murray. We'll call the vote. Carol Lee?
Aye.
Jeff Murray?
Aye.
Scott Person? Jeff McGuire, aye, for nothing. Okay, uh, now we're gonna be moving into a report, the treasurer's report, a section eleven. Uh, a finance department report. Those reports start at page one forty nine. And they go through the um Budget to actual expenditures. And then we move from there, so the over budget, and that's for the current fiscal year, July through October twenty twenty five, so That goes from page one forty eight to one fifty three, and then on page one fifty one, we have check register Uh, for transactions for the town, so Those are five pages. And then we have the balance sheet, which I appreciate the treasurer including. So that lists our balance sheet for the town Through the same period, July through October twenty twenty five. Anybody with any specific questions that they want Eric or Jim to go back to the treasurer with? Okay. Then we'll move on to uh Section twelve, the tax collectors' information, that starts on page one sixty four. We also had a a letter from the tax collector, uh, page one sixty six. Kate is doing a very good job Actively correct, collecting Delinquent tax amounts and uh You know, the information she provides is is extremely helpful in understanding what we have. So in the first section, she has Uh, off of our software system, what we have to collect, what's been paid to date, um. Page one sixty five is the daily deposits and what's going in. So October's a big collection month Because it's the The second quarterly payment that we, we need to the second quarterly payment that we, we need to make. One sixty-six is her letter about, uh, her collection efforts, and then one sixty-seven through one eighty-nine are the delinquent tax accounts. Um, based upon total dollar value. Anybody have any questions? Okay. After that, we have, uh, section thirteen, departmental reports. So we have the troop K report. Building land in use, and we have to thank Lynn for doing this for us. There's a lot of information that she provided, especially in pages two oh three, I think it is, two oh three through two oh eight. And I definitely Scott and Jeff and Carol, I'd like to sit there and have everybody look at that, because I'd like to understand the estimated costs and what you guys think of that in those sections, so.
I did, I went over them, and we decided that the building inspector was supposed to go over those numbers.
I, I just want everybody to be aware of them, because I don't, I think they're low.
I think they are too, I, I looked at them myself. In detail, it was a very good report this time, I gotta tell her that. Very good report, but not, but I, I think they're very low.
Okay. And the one thing that I would ask is, um. Are they all without labor? Because I can't believe that the contractors are doing that. So. And Eric, you tell me if I'm wrong, is the, is it the cost of the materials without labor, or is it the cost of the project?
You'll have to ask that one of the building official.
Okay. We will sit there and do it, I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, because it stuck out to me when I reviewed all the info.
I think it should be cost of the project. Because when you get a roof done, the contractor comes out and tells you thirteen thousand dollars, and that's what we're paying. How much we're paying on a permit.
Yeah, so that's the supplies and the cost of the, the labor for the contract, right, okay. I mean, I, and I just look at those numbers, and I just, I was going, they're kind of low. And it's something that we should evaluate, because you know, it's a voluntary system, and it's who's checking the information. And it's just something that we as a community, and as a board, we should be looking at to sit there and make sure that we're we're advising that department correctly, so that they maximize their revenues.
Right.
So, uh. The building department was the next one that we had, we have also the information in there related to, um. To, um, blight. And then we also had a report, uh, from Public Works. So Eric, thank you, um, or Mark Williams, thank you, sorry. We'll go from there. And that was it, anybody have any questions on any of the departmental reports? All right, and then item fourteen, this is the first time we've had correspondence, so Eric, if you can sit there and help us out, um. You wrote a letter to the Trails and Greenway Program Coordinator.
So, uh, the Hop River Trail Alliance has looked at submitting a grant to the DEP Rec Trails Program to look at the entire length of the Hop River Trail to do two things, do a safety study at all the road-trail intersections. Um, this is something that the DEP has been focused on after somebody was killed at a road intersection. Um, uh, not off the hop, but one of the other, uh, rail trails within the state. Um, and at the same time, do a parking assessment. Because, um, both DEP and we occasionally get complaints that the parking lots are all filled. So they wanted to look overall and say, what is our actual, you know, how much usage are these actually getting, provide advice to, to the DEP about where they might need additional trail hits for the trails. So this is not something that will cost the town any money. Um, similar to the signage project that was done on the trail. The organization itself, Hop River Trail Alliance, will, uh, use you know, basically labor in kind as part of the study. Um, so it will, it's not gonna cost the town any. And you should get something out of it that will help you if you go to grant fund uh, improvements in crossings of the trail, things about that, but it's not binding on the town. It's just a piece of information that may or may not do the town some good in the future.
All right, and then, uh, we received a letter from Ram, is Ram requesting that we fund them some of the grant dollars that we've received?
Basically, the town as the school district is receiving some grant money called seed. But it's unclear as to, you know, the, the basis of them giving the grant is our total student population. Um, so it would kind of make sense that the money would be split between the regional school district and the local school district. Um, but Valerie or Superintendent Bruno has insisted that all the money will go to the elementary school, and they're not gonna share any with the school district. That's not my fight, I'm just putting the letter in there so you can review it.
Okay. And who received the grant, Andover, the town, or the school? Like, where did the money get deposited? Has it gotten?
I have no idea.
Okay. All right.
It will probably come into the town.
I get it, I mean, depends upon who has. Okay, we'll sit there and deal with it, I will sit there and bring this to the attention of the, uh, chairperson on the Board of Ed. We'll sit there and try to see how to best resolve that.
And the real question is, do you even share it with either school board? Or just put it in the town general fund? Because let's face it, we're already funding the special education program. So why shouldn't this come to the town as a refund for all the money we spend on their special ed?
Um, we will sit there and deal with it, and, um. We will sit there and talk to the members of that board, and, and actually to Ram, to get an understanding of what they're doing. So, I mean, obviously, Eric, this is, this is grant funding for the expansion of their special education services. That's what they're supposed to do, yes, we are funding their special education department, but, um. If there, the state is providing additional funding to provide additional service to special education, we'll sit there and deal with it.
Well, I mean, my first thought is, since the town is providing with them a vehicle for their special education needs. Maybe we should keep it as our expenses for running the program.
You know, I wish you well in Dalton, and I hope you get that done in Dalton correctly, my friend. I will sit there, and we will have a battle, Eric, I will sit there and I will get with the rest of the board, and we'll deal with it. And Eric, you do know that you're loved, so thank you very much for everything, right? As Eric always does, he stirs the pot, and I'm sitting there trying to cut this short, and this meeting will end at about nine o'clock, as long as we don't have too much craziness. Okay, so, um, right now, we're moving on from correspondence to item fifteen, public speak. And I'm gonna go through, um, uh, Eric Johansson, we'll let you go first, you're at the top of the board.
Again, I just wanna thank the board and Eric for hiring me for the town of Andover. I have some big, hopefully big things planned, that can make the town a lot better.
Good, we appreciate it, thank you very much. Liz Lowketch.
Hi, uh, nothing, nothing more for me tonight, thanks guys, that's a lot of good work.
Megan Lally.
Nothing further for me, thank you guys.
Diane Grunier.
Yes, um, first I'd like to say, uh, w- welcome to the new guys, uh, Jim and Eric, uh. Looking forward to, um, seeing what you do for us, so, um, welcome aboard, uh, good luck to you. Um, also, um, I'd like to say that I'm delighted that the board is looking to find ways to fund, um, both all of Tess, Linda, and Haley for the, um, senior center, senior community center, I think that's a great idea, um, looks like there's a lot of support for that group, and, um, delighted to hear that, uh, you're gonna go find some money for them, that's a good idea. Um, also, I'm a little concerned, at the beginning of the meeting, um, there was somebody from the Norton Commission who asked to be on, because they had something they wanted to discuss, and it just seemed to be ignored, or nothing happened.
Actually, I'll, I'll apologize for that one, Diane, I forgot to add it to the agenda, because I don't know where that came from. I'll, I'll take responsibility, I'll reach out to Heidi.
Oh, okay, like I say, it was just, they had something to say, and like, whoops, so. Okay, just letting you know that it was noticed, um, people notice these things, so, thank you very much, al- always a good meeting, thank you.
All right, uh, Bill Penn.
Nothing additional to add, other than I will say that I know the person, I'm on the Norton Commission also, so I believe they had attended, because they'd been conversing with Ann. And Ann had asked her to attend this meeting, so, uh, I'm not sure what their exact discussions were, but that was why she was on here, because she had talked to Ann about something, so. Uh, I told her basically to email you guys, the whole board, and request to be on the next meeting agenda, so hopefully she'll do that.
That'd be great, thank you. Joanne Heber.
Um, just a couple things, first of all, I wanna wish all of you well, as you look to fill such very important positions in our town. You know, looking forward to seeing the people that get selected for offices, and, um. It's just important, because everybody that's in an office there does give out important information to our residents, um, we come in with questions, and we expect to get the right answers. Um, there's been a couple lapses where that hadn't happened, and I mean, no blame on anyone there, but I just look forward to seeing, you know, a nice professional process and, and getting good people hired. And then personally, I am happy to see, you all know, as an outgoing member of the Board of Finance, I had advocated for a long time to move the duties of the, um, municipal agent and the social services person over to the senior community center, now that we have one, and we have a director and many employees over there, so. Um, that budget total was seventy-four hundred dollars with the, um, Murph payment and the sixty-one hundred dollar stipend, so hopefully that will help. Um, get the duties and the pay over there, so. Happy to hear that, that's what a lot of other towns do, so thank you and good luck moving forward.
Tess Graffs.
Jeff, I am so all set, thank you.
Okay, Leanne Hutchinson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, yeah, thank you, um, I was on earlier, but I could hear you, but apparently you couldn't hear me. Um, so I wanted to say that I'm thrilled that Eric is reporting that the Bunker Hill Road Bridge is gonna be open by December first, barring some very unforeseen and, you know, severe weather events, apparently. So that's gonna be, um, much, much more convenient, as you can imagine, and also a lot of peace of mind. And I wanted to thank Eric for his dedication to the town. And he's done a great deal of work, I wish he was still gonna be a resident, at least, but it doesn't sound like that's gonna happen. But, um, I'll miss you, Eric, and I just wish you the best.
Uh, Marcy Minor.
Hi, uh, once again, another, um, great meeting, everyone. I'm, I'm thrilled that you agreed to renew Haley's contract. She is an excellent addition to the center, and I believe the investment is well worth it. Um, regarding the hiring of a new town administrator. I wanna urge you guys to appoint the search, a search committee, so we can move forward as quickly as possible. Um, I just hate to hate to have us, you know, sit around and spend time, you know, trying to make decisions, and I know how hard it is to hire people, and then you have a lot of other people with their, um, thoughts, and we just really need to have a company that's gonna be objective. And is gonna guide us towards a best candidate. Um, so, anyway, I think that we need to start making some investments for our town, and I think another, this would be a good investment for us to, uh, be able to move forward with a, um. Uh, new administrator, so. Uh, Eric, I've already told you, um, how much I'm gonna miss you, and, uh, you've really, um. Did a lot for our town, thank you so much, good luck on your, um, your new, um, prospect there, so. I'm sure you're looking forward to it, we'll miss you. Also, I did wanna, um, appreciate being able to, uh, see the new guys in town. It's, uh, we look forward to seeing what you can, what you'll be doing with us, all right, thank you.
Okay. Jim Bolano, I will let you have the last public speak, I think. Because I don't really want to offer that up to Dennis O'Brien, if he's still on.
Well, I know Dennis well, too, I don't know if he's gonna, I'm gonna live with that, but. Anyway, thanks, everyone, thanks, uh, to the Board of Selectmen for, uh, for choosing me to do this, I hope, uh, I could be helpful. Um, if I've heard one thing in the past, uh, we can change, is that um, that's some big shoes to fill, I know Eric um, did a great job here, and he was obviously beloved by the community. And I wanna thank, thank him also, because he's taught me a lot. And he's, and he's hanging on there, you know, some people in their, in their last days get a little, uh, get a little loose, but, uh, Eric has, uh, still has a few days left, and he's showing me a lot. And, um, I look forward, this feels like a great town, a great community. You know, I've been to many, whether they've been Zoom or in-person, uh, town meetings. And, um, it's tough to get people, you know, just the turnout here shows that this community is committed, so I look forward to working with you all.
All right, thank you very much. Eric, do you wanna say anything, uh, uh, as you're parting, uh, from our, our board meetings?
No.
You know, Eric, I love you. Eric, thank you so much for everything that you've done for the town, you've been greatly appreciated, and you know that, um. I do wish you the best of luck in Dalton, they're, uh, they're lucky to get you. So. Uh, okay, um. I think we're done, did I miss anybody in public speak? And Dennis, do you wanna say anything? Because I know you're on. Technical problems, good. All right, um, I think we're okay, did I miss anyone?
Dennis.
No, he can't, I mean, Carol, did you wanna say something before we leave?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, no problem.
Poor Dennis, that's all I wanna say, poor Dennis.
Dennis, Dennis is fine.
You pick on him.
I do not pick on Dennis, Dennis is a, a dear friend, and I will, I will take him out for breakfast soon, so.
I hope so.
That's right, um, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Carol, seconded, all those in favor, aye, for nothing, everyone, thank you very much, appreciate it, Eric, thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.